All right, the next item on our agenda is the issuance of notes and bonds, and I do not believe we have any this evening. Is that correct? Item number three on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have items 3A through 3F. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to adopt the consent agenda as published, items 3A through 3F.
Second. Any discussion, Mr. Weber?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove 3E, please, for discussion later.
Mr. Andre, did you get that?
Yes, I did.
All right. Please call the question. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
All right, then, you have your community committee reports in your packet. If you have any questions under that, please bring that up under new business. Item number four are public comments. This is an opportunity for those of you who would like to address council who are not on the agenda. Also during this time, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. My name is Bill Hahn, and I live at 58th and Beverly. You have an ordinance on the books that is being violated, and I'd like to know if you're not going to keep the law enforced, why don't you just remove it? And I'm talking about the disturbing of the peace against a commercial business after 10 o'clock at night.
Have you reported your claim?
Yes, I have. They've gone over there and talked, and then the last time I made the call, I was referred to call Mr. Scanlon, and I have not done that.
Okay.
Because apparently it's not doing any good. The police witnessed it, sat over in the CBS parking lot and validated the noise, and yet nothing is being done. When you can hear that noise two blocks away after 10 o'clock at night, Thursday night, Friday night, and Saturday night.
Mr. Hahn, what is your address?
5806 Beverly.
Okay, not being familiar with your concern, I'll, we'll have to look into it, and I will get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Also during this time, we introduce the young members of our audience to get an opportunity to stand up and tell us who they are, and if they're visiting, or if they're here for a particular class. Kelsey, I think you're hiding behind Mr. Martin. Do you want to stand up and tell us who, give us your name?
My name is Kelsey Gibbs.
And are you here visiting us this evening?
Uh huh.
Excellent.
Suzie Suzanne Gibbs.
Awesome. Well, welcome.
Suzie Suzanne Gibbs?
That's it. That's it. Well, glad to have you. All right, the next item on our agenda is item number five, and these are action items. We have one item this evening. It's the temporary cereal malt beverage permit application for the Arts and Eats Festival. And if, I would entertain a motion. Yes?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to approve this CMB special malt beverage temporary permit, temporary CMB permit for Jake's Smokehouse Barbecue for the Mission Arts and Eats Festival, September 16th and 17th, 2011.
Second. All right, is there any discussion on this item? Please call the question. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Well, I'm gonna have to vote no, because I don't have any information on it. All I got's a piece of paper here that says, "Information for Agenda 5A, Temporary CMB Permit Application for Arts and Eats Festival will be provided to you prior to the meeting." Don't believe I got anything.
Good point.
So I'll say nay.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
It's already over.
The next item on our agenda is our committee reports. We have item Finance and Administration, David Shepherd.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I have two items tonight. The first item is item 6A, Memorandum of Understanding with Mark for Smart Lights for Smart Cities. I think everybody got, I wanted to make sure everybody also got the, in their weekend packet, the information that the chief sent out regarding the LED lights. Couple of questions that were raised about that, okay. Background is the Smart Lights for Smart Cities program has been reviewed and discussed at both the CDC and Finance and Administration. This MOU defines the roles and responsibilities of both Mark and the City of Mission for this program, which will provide Mission with funding for $120,000 worth of street lighting improvements. Improvements will include fixtures, lights, and installation costs associated with 181 new LED streetlights to replace existing streetlights. Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with Mark for the Smart Lights for Smart Cities program.
Is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Weber?
I'm still not comfortable with replacing these lights on some of the streets in our city, the main roads and everything. I do not have a problem, because they get good access, but on this, I have dealt with before, where the looms from these lights is absorbed a lot by, and recently, what we had tarred some of our streets and sealed them with that black, and it doesn't do a good job for reflection into the area of the homes. And I just have a problem with them, that's all. It's something that they're pushing on us, and they're pushing on us, and they're pushing on us, and I'm still not comfortable with the light. So I'm gonna have to say no.
All right. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Please call the question. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
And last item is item 6B, Resolution Establishing Ballot Language for a Quarter-Cent Sales Tax for the Street Program. In July, Council approved Resolution Number 829 directing staff to develop the ballot language for a Quarter-Cent Sales Tax that voters will consider for the Mission Street Program. This resolution authorizes the city to proceed with a special mail ballot election on December 6th, 2011, for a Quarter-Cent Retailer Sales Tax to fund transportation improvements and related costs. If approved, this tax would expire in 10 years. Madam Mayor, I move the governing body to approve the resolution authorizing and providing for the calling of a special question election in the City of Mission, Kansas, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the city a question relating to the imposition of special 1/4 percent, that's .25 percent, citywide retailer sales tax, city to finance the cost of transportation improvements and related costs, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of such transportation improvements and related reserves and financing costs, and the providing for the giving of notice of said special question election.
Second. Is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Weber?
Let me make sure I got this straight. This is the sales tax, right?
This is a sales tax.
That's gonna be assessed for this person, okay.
If approved.
If approved.
Just to put it right, it's the language, ballot language.
Okay. I'd like to read just one paragraph. Whereas the governing body hereby deems it advisable to provide for a 1/4 percent special purpose sales tax to finance the cost of transportation improvement, including the construction and reconstruction of streets, bridges, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, trails, parking facilities, garage, bicycle lanes, street lighting, traffic signalization, signage, and landscape along the right-of-way, and related improvements to the projects by the imposition of a special proposed 1/4 percent citywide tax. Well, that covers an awful lot of territory, and I think it just covers too much territory. It'll be a little more specific if we're gonna do it on roads or what it's gonna be, and this thing could be used for anything, according to that. Take care of the flyer bids and all that other stuff along the right-of-way that the state should be doing. I just don't, I just don't particularly care for it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Mrs. Krang?
Mayor, we had quite an extensive dialogue about this issue, whether it should be specific in nature, more specific relative to roads and curbs and gutters only versus the trails, parking facilities, and garages. And during the meeting, we kinda collectively determined that it may be better off and behoove the city and the constituency to look at all those things, so we don't have to go back later and nickel-and-dime the community and the city to get some of these things taken care of, because parking facilities, garages, they all lead into streets and vice versa.
Okay, thank you. All right, please call the question. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
And Mayor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Next, we have Community Development, Lawrence Andre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll take item 3E first from the consent agenda.
All right, thank you.
Dealing with the West Gateway Master Developer Contract Amendment. Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to approve Core Design Second Amendment to the West Gateway Master Developer Agreement.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Weber?
This, I'm sure that each of you appear received a photograph of some businesses up on the street up there we're talking about.
Are you referring to Mr. Lynch's letter?
Beg your pardon?
Are you referring to Mr. Lynch's letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I had several phone calls up there in regards to this, and personally, I needed some help interpreting the photograph myself, but I did get all the answers that I had wished to get. In fact, I got too many. And, you know, I just cannot fathom why we want to do something that the businesses up there do not support. And, and we oughta learn the lesson some places. I mean, we've still got problems with the mall, with the mall down there.
Well, this master development agreement does not affect Broadmoor north of 61st Street, which is, which is related.
Okay, it affects these people up there if this is in here what they're telling me. If this photograph that we have here, if that's what that affects, it affects those businesses up there, right?
You mean Mr. Lynch's photograph?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Lynch's photograph doesn't have anything to do with the West Gateway Master Development Agreement. What Mr. Lynch's letter dealt with was a meeting that Martin and Justin and Olson and Associates and I had with business owners between, on Broadmoor, between Martway and Johnson Drive regarding proposed infrastructure, street improvements, but that's nothing that's gone to committee. It hasn't been voted on. We're still working on it. We took some feedback. We, the idea had been floated by Olson. We provided that with the, to the business owners, and a few property owners were not there. We're gonna be having more meetings to discuss with them. They had a number of very specific comments. Some of them that were made were what Mr. Lynch made. There were four specific property owners that had concerns and reservations about the types of parking that was suggested in the original proposal by Olson, so they're working on that. We'll be gonna, we'll be having more meetings. What is being voted on now with this West Gateway Master Development Agreement has nothing to do with that meeting that we had with Mr. Lynch or the other property owners on Broadmoor between Martway and Johnson Drive.
Mayor, I think most of us have been around to know, if this is approved by the council, that place is gonna move forward up there, and you know it, and I know it, and I say to government body, give us permission to do it.
But his.
If, if we don't need it now, let's postpone the vote then, and let some of this stuff get worked out to the satisfaction of some of the people up there.
This, go ahead, Mr. Andre.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item specifically in front of us, the West Gateway Master Developer Contract, is reaffirming Core Design's role in the process redevelopment. Core Design works as a go-between between the city and private property owners when they want to redevelop a specific property. Core Design has no role in any specific public improvement projects in the district. So just for clarification.
They haven't talked to those people, Andre, excuse me. Those people haven't been talked to by anybody up there. Who the hell they been talking to?
That would be, that would be correct, Mr. Weber, and that Core Design would not be talking with, with Mr. Lynch, because the project that you're referring to and that the mayor has discussed tonight is a public improvement project. Core Design, who is in front of us tonight for this amendment, has no role in the public improvement process. They work with private property owners on redevelopment. So if Mr. Lynch were to want to redevelop his property by tearing down his building and building something different, that is when Core Design would come into play.
How much property do we own up there?
Thank you, Mr. Andre.
How many piece of property do we own in this area?
Right now?
Right now.
None.
We don't own any in this area.
Well, we own the, we have a land lease for Mission Pep Mart.
Correct. We got the land lease for that. We don't own that other piece of property up there behind that?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mrs. Krang?
Just to let you know, Mr. Weber, tonight on the way home, I picked an animal up at my vet's, and they had the same concerns, and I expressed to them that it was not on the agenda tonight. We were not discussing details. It had not gone to committee, and we would be discussing that fully with the people along Broadmoor and the rest of the community. We haven't discussed that yet.
You pass this, and I guarantee it's gonna come back to bite you, like everything else.
Is there any other discussion? Please call the question. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I have three more items from the regular agenda. All three deal with utility fees. Over the last several years, the City Council has increased the number of utilities that are used to pay for services. The annual establishment of rates has typically been contained in just one budget resolution considered and passed by council. To increase the transparency of these funds and more fully explain on an annual basis the purpose of the utilities, the rates will be approved in individual resolutions. So 6A deals with the solid waste utility fee, and Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to approve a resolution establishing the rate for the solid waste utility fees. The fee will remain unchanged from 2011 at a rate of $10.09 monthly.
Second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Madam Mayor, I do have some comments I would like to make. I appreciate.
Mr. Andre?
Yes. I wanted to say that I strongly support Mission's solid waste program. As a resident, I think it provides superior service at a reduced cost. I have heard from numerous residents in other cities that are envious of our program. I want to see the program continue. And while historically, I understand why the program was funded the way it was, I do not believe that funding approach makes sense in 2012 and beyond. In 1994, the city first got into the trash business and made it free for homeowners, because we had a ton of extra cash and didn't want to be penalized by the state. A decade later, the state's strange tax policies had come to an end, but like so many other government program, programs, ours did not change. In 2009, we finally implemented a solid waste utility fee, but unfortunately only set it to cover about 50% of the Deaf and Bah contract. The rest of the single-family residential service is being subsidized by the city's taxpayers, including the businesses and multifamily residents. That is unfair and not in the Mission spirit. Mission is better than that. We are proud of our community and don't expect handouts from our government. Washington DC has led this country off a cliff because of its inability to be honest with voters and its willingness to make promises to the citizens that it can't keep. With the current trash program in Mission, I believe we are doing the same thing. We are better than that. As a result, I cannot support the 2012 budget resolution, and I advocate that this city needs to clean the program up next year as part of a strategic planning process. Such a process would engage our community on services that should be provided and who should pay for those services. So thank you, Mayor.
Is there any other discussion? Yeah, Mr. Shepherd?
The only thing I want to say, Lawrence, I appreciate your comments, is that on an annual basis, we evaluate this fee, and on an annual basis, we have the ability to elevate this fee up or down based on, you know, economic conditions, and I personally think that not only is the way we deal with solid waste, we are in a very enviable position, but I think that it also is very important that we continue with this fee, and if the city is in a position to shoulder part of it, that it keeps our city, particularly with our high percentage of rental housing, it really does keep things much more consistent, much cleaner. And again, I mean, the only thing I take exception is to say that we need to clean up this program is somehow to imply that because the city has taken on 50% of the burden the last couple of years is somehow a misuse of, you know, municipal resources, and I for one, don't see it that way at all, and continue to strongly support this fee.
Thank you, Dave. We both.
Shepherd?
No, if I may, Mayor, I apologize.
Well, I'm not gonna, you've each stated your opinion, and I'm not gonna get into tit-for-tat, so.
Okay.
If it's a tit-for-tat, if it's a different comment, great.
Fair enough.
All right. Any other discussion? Mrs. Krang?
Just clarification for the record, the solid waste utility fee is 6C, not 6A.
Thank you. All right.
Well, I'm just, I'm going in order of the way that was written, and, and that was the first one that was listed, so.
All right, so, let's call the question. Andre?
Nay.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, the next one in front of me deals with the stormwater utility fee. Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to approve a resolution establishing the rate for the stormwater utility. The fee will remain unchanged from 2011 at a rate of $19 per ERU monthly.
Second. Is there any discussion on this item? Please call the question. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
And finally, Madam Mayor, a resolution regarding the transportation utility fee. Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to approve a resolution establishing the rate for the transportation utility. The fee will remain unchanged from 2011 at a rate of .0149 cents per trip for commercial properties, and .02076 cents for residential properties.
Second. Is there any discussion on this item? Please call the question. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Nay.
Weber?
Nay.
Does that conclude your report?
That does conclude my report, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mrs. Footlick.
I just wanna thank the staff and the community for all they've done, for all the input on the budget. We couldn't have done it without everybody, and we're still not there yet. We have a ways to go, but I wanna thank everybody with Mike Scanlon's legacy.
Thank you. All right, item number seven, we have our 2012 budget resolution. Mrs. Gibbs?
Each year as part of the annual budget process, the city adopts a resolution establishing the tax rates and financial policies for the coming year. This proposed resolution has been reviewed by council and modified to incorporate the changes recommended by the August 10 Finance and Administration Committee. Additionally, following the public area August 10, the council specifically adopts the 2012 budgets for the city of Mission, Rock Creek, Grange District #1, and Rock Creek, Creek, Grange District #2. Madam Mayor, I want the City Council to adopt the resolution establishing tax rates and financial policies for budget year 2012 for the city of Mission.
Yeah, is there? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the question. Andre?
Nay.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Nay.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to adopt the city of Mission's 2012 budget program.
Second. Is there any discussion? Okay, please call the question. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to adopt the 2012 budgets for Rock Creek, Grange District #1, and Rock Creek, Grange District #2 as published.
Second. Is there any discussion? Please call the question. Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Krang?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
All right, the next item we have is new business, and we need to go ahead and vote on the delegates for the League of Kansas Municipalities and also the National League of Cities. Mrs. Footlick?
Based on the population of Mission and according to state law and the LKN bylaws, the city may select two voting delegates to represent the city at the League's annual Business and Policy Session. At this time, Councilmember Grossadere and Councilmember Krang plan to attend the LKN Annual Conference. Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to select Councilmember Grossadere and Councilmember Krang as voting delegates for the League of Kansas Municipalities and the Business and Policy Session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there discussion? Please call the question.
Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
As a direct member of the NLC, Mission is entitled to one vote at the annual business meeting. It is recommended that council select one voting delegate and one alternate to represent the city at this meeting in November. At this time, council member Grossadere and council member Crane plan to attend the NLC Congress of Cities. Madam Mayor, I move the city council select Debbie Crane as voting delegate and Sue Grossadere as the alternate voting delegate for the National League of Cities Annual Business Meeting.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Please call the question.
Andre?
Aye.
Footlick?
Aye.
Gibbs?
Aye.
Grossadere?
Aye.
Crane?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Vandenberg?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Do you have any business?
Okay, Mrs. Gibbs, you have some new business that you'd like to share with us.
Just a reminder of some dates. I hope you all have September 8 marked on your calendar, and I know some of you have taken invitations to the art show. We have eight great artists this year, so I think it's really gonna be cool. We have a harvest again. We'll have wine and hors d'oeuvres, and we'll have Mr. Mike Scanlon and his tux and tails, so that should be fun. So, I hope you all mark your calendar for that. And then September 16th and 17th is Arts and Eats, and this year, we are going to do an auction during Arts and Eats on Friday night, and the auction will benefit our adoption programs for Thanksgiving and Christmas, because we feel like this year we're really gonna be inundated with families who are in need, so we're going to have an auction. So, if anybody has any items they would like to donate, we would love to have them. I'm asking my committee to all bring a couple apiece, and so we're hoping that we'll get a couple, we'll get some really cool ones. Kristy, are we gonna get a condo? I'm pretty sure. And where? Or by our... Not Mission? No, not Mission. There's your better vacation spot.
Two-week condo in Mission.
Condo in Mission, man.
My wife might buy that soon.
I'm gonna see if I can get a... Oh, we get a basketball for you leaving on South David.
You can't give those Mike Anderson balls away, huh? They'll pay you if you take them off their hands.
That's probably a gift.
Well, I'm gonna see if I can get a Kentucky basketball with Cal Perry's name on it. I thought maybe I might be fun. Maybe I can get a center football with... What's his name, Stoops? You can get a Bubba Starling. And then Saturday, we will have our mission members for our first responders and all of the veterans in the Northeast Johnson Drive will be having a luncheon from 11:30 till 1:00, and we will have the jazz band who will be playing patriotic songs. And the Girl Scouts are gonna have red, white and blue balloons, so everybody will be able to put little notes in them for veterans that they would like to float to the sky when we have our celebration. So, I think it's really gonna be a cool weekend, so I hope you've all marked your calendars. I think it'll really be great. If you have anything you wanna donate, call me. If I don't hear from you, I'll call you.
All right, thank you. Now, for Mayor's report, we've been busy all summer with working on the budget, and then also, we've been moving forward on our swimming pool task force, and we'll have we do a member with us here this evening, but we don't have anything to report really yet, because we're still in process. I think the committee's really working hard, and I'm not sure exactly where, what the recommendation's going to be, but I would expect to have one to counsel here pretty quick. The other thing that I have is our park commission has been very short of members, and I'd have two people, and I've given you their resumes to fill positions, because we had vacancies in Ward 4. I provided these both to Suzie and to Dave, as well as being at your... Do you find them at your place? We have Erin Maloney, who is a young mother in Mission, and we also have Mark Rundzer, who is not as young, and he's a teacher, and both have expressed a lot of interest in parks and are very excited to serve in this capacity. I'm particularly excited about Erin, because she has got small children, and that's, you know, we need, that's what we need on the park board to keep doing the exciting and good work that our park commission does. So, I would entertain a motion to approve these appointments.
Madam Mayor, I move the city council uphold the appointments of Erin Maloney, Ward 4, Mark Rundzer, Ward 4, to the Park and Recreation Committee, with terms expiring December 31, 2012.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Mr. Scanlon, we have a city administrator's report.
Yes, I have 10 items. We will be doing a walkthrough of Knoll Avenue tomorrow with contractor, engineering firm, Martin and Justin and myself. We'll start Mill and Overlay next Monday, and that'll run through September 2. I'll have Justin put a map in the weekend update. We're collecting feedback right now from residents on our story seal and microseal program, so on September 7, we should have a pretty good sampling of what people thought about the work, how they were notified, did we do it timely. We placed schools' school zone signs and notified drivers with those big sign boards starting last week. We started enforcement this week. We've written a few tickets. There was a point in which the flashing lights weren't working on Lamar, and so we've asked KC Penile to come out and find out why they stopped working, so you could hear about that.